Do you have a form here for your officer's roll call?
Sure. Dave Welling is excused. I'm not sure where the general.
You don't need to show him up and move forward without me to have a form, right?
We have the form.
Okay. Come in, we'll just welcome them when they get here and we'll move forward. We have the general before us, Mr. James, do we need to consider that? We're now going to entertain motion to approve.
Make that motion.
One second. Any discussion? What discussion? I'll hear say aye. Aye, if any opposed? Do you have one, Jim? We have the council minutes for June 17th. Concern with government's. Mom, you're real, I'm sorry. We're okay? Yeah, well, just acknowledge, we don't give a motion at this point, but I appreciate that. We acknowledge those that they've been prepared and will move on to these bills. It's kind of without you. And we have our comments here with today's day moment. Questions or comments concerning the regarding bills? Is there a motion to approve bills?
Make that motion.
Is there a motion here, second?
Not second.
Discussion? Discussion, I'll hear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, if any opposed? If they're opposed. We have the revenue expenditure report for May. Questions on that?
Very close to the end of the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Oh, pretty good.
Yeah.
Most of our, almost everything over 100% revenue wise.
The fiscal year ends June 30th.
Yes. These end, this report's in May 31st, only month.
Is there a motion to approve that report? Motion, is there a second?
Not second.
Any discussion? Discussion, I'll hear say aye. Aye, if any opposed? Counsel comments, Mr. Schmidt, if you have anything, sir, what's on your mind?
Uh, Kim is here, excuse me. I just wanted to recognize the rec department from this last week and this the refrigeration panel. It will be the events, I came in after the refrigerators switched out and everything that's in place. I just want to recognize that was a really good job. And the other thing is, I hope everybody has a safe and great 4th of July.
I echo that. Please be careful on the 4th of July. I got a few scars from Roman candles when I was a kid, so please be careful, be mindful. Every year there's some horrible story about something getting hurt, so let's try and do that. Um, second, I want to say I'm sorry for not being at the last meeting, but I got a really incredible opportunity to go watch my kids. And there's a Junior Meredith Cup in golf that's representing the entire state. My daughter and my son were able to make both those teams, so. Eight kids, two of whom are at Evanston here. Excellent. It was a proud dad moment, but the best part was when they had done that, they sold raffle tickets. And within three days of announcing to this community, we had raffle tickets, so we sold every single raffle ticket for those kids. So that's, that's one reason I love this community is the support I had as a kid, the support my kids get, it's, uh, so I just want to tell everybody, thank you publicly for, excuse me, at the last meeting, but also the support my kids get and all the kids get in this community, so.
Congratulations. You and your kids, excellent.
Um, I'd just like to wish everybody a safe 4th of July. You know, happened a few years ago, so hopefully people are mindful of fire dangers if the winds are up. Please, please be cautious and let's not burn our community down. I'd also just like to remind people to shop local, I've been talking to several merchants around town. And you talked about business getting a little slower times. And if we can shop home first, it's good for everybody. And then thirdly, with the 4th of July coming up, most of veterans know when the legal times are and stuff. And they embrace themselves for that, but many of our veterans have PTSD and have been dealing, they used to call it shell shock because it was from the veins of the noises, um, after World War I. Even though it's a day to celebrate our freedom and they fought for our freedom, many of them have been in wars and stuff. It's their worst holiday because of the loud noises, so they embrace themselves for the time period that we're supposed to have the fireworks. But if we could mind that, it would help them out a lot. Thank you.
I wanted to start with something a little different, a bigger, um, you know, we talk about, and everybody that comes here is, talks about local city government. But we had something happen on a really incredibly large stage in which, um, the American people came together and got the public lands. Uh, but so many people were against, they first got it reduced from 3 million to a couple hundred thousand. And then eventually off the table altogether. And that was a bipartisan cry, not from the people that were elected, but from the people. So, um, voices matter and nothing proves it more than that. And it starts here and it grows. So your voice can change, um, legislation generations. So that made me, the working government made me really happy. Though I noticed that our congressmen and our senators, uh, didn't stick up for our land here in Wyoming. So if you didn't want your inheritance sold out from under you or, uh, what do they call that when they seize a house? Imminent domain of public land, um, make sure you remember that, uh, when you vote. Because they didn't listen to you this time, they're not going to listen to you next time. And if you're going to have a wonderful 4th of July, I hope everybody does. Um, and you enjoy the freedoms of this nation. When you're young, be sure to think of veteran or a serviceman. That's all. Thank you.
Appreciate all that. I do have a couple of things I would like to mention. I know a lot of times I'll come up with council comments I pass by as I make other comments during the debate, but I think there's a couple of things that I'd like to quickly acknowledge. Last night, we, as a community, we lost former Fire Chief, uh, John Lunsford. Maybe you knew, I recognize that name, he passed away yesterday evening. John Lunsford was an important, uh, symbol in this council for a time. Uh, a year back, uh, and I was closely associated with Chief Lunsford. Uh, joined the fire department myself back in the early 90s. He was the fire chief at the time. Had an opportunity to learn from him and to see his leadership and the way that he, uh, conducted himself, the way he administered the fire department. And then over the, over the course of several years, Chief Lunsford became a very dear friend of mine. He passed away last night, so, uh, this community, I think it'd be appropriate to extend our best wishes to his wife, Toni, their children. Chief Lunsford was an important, uh, part of this community and we will, we will miss him. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and there's been some talk, I've seen, I suspect many have heard, that today the county commission passed a resolution uh, closing, uh, fireworks, open fires in the uncoordinatedness of the county. The communities are very reliant on the amount of you have done similar. I have been asked several times if that might be something for the city of Evanston. Uh, and what I can say right now is, is, uh, I don't know. Uh, obviously it's dry and we need to be extremely careful. I did visit with our fire folks earlier today and they expressed to me that they thought that, that, uh, right now, we didn't need to make that decision right now, that things were looking favorable, uh, to be able to continue. I recognize the, uh, I guess the important part that fireworks play in a lot of people's lives, they enjoy it. I, myself, I really don't all that much, but I recognize others that do, and that's to be respected. And we, it, it is a fun thing for the community and we don't want to shut that down if at all possible. So, uh, I don't, uh, at this point in the way, uh, plan on making such a declaration or an invitation to the council to impose such a thing. If we do so, it would be an urgent, uh, effort and as we get a little closer, um, perhaps we, we will. So, uh, please be mindful and, and, and watch for, uh, for those things that do come. But at this point, uh, based on the information in the council that I have received from our fire department, uh, I don't think that that's something that we need to do at this point. That could change. But with that in mind, please be careful. Uh, I hope the community, I think that, that we are, although one of you looked at us from the moon, I don't know that, that we look alike, we're all beyond that. Sure, but, but have fun and just be mindful and be awful careful. So we don't want anybody to get hurt or anything, uh, anything to be lost as a community. Ever without any fun, so. With that, we will move on. We do have a square again to do. Do you have a new business officer? Over here, Trevor Hawes.
Mr. Mayor, this is Trevor Hawes, our new business officer. As of right now, our agency is actually officially fully staffed. Uh, not many agencies around Wyoming or around the United States can say that. And if possible, we'll go down to the community and support ourselves and the council, thank you for that.
You see everyone breathing from this water, feet after me. Cause I, cause I need one to breathe, uh, like. Breathe your hand. I, Trevor Hawes.
I, Trevor Hawes.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support?
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or upon it.
That I have not knowingly violated any law or regulation upon it.
A law related to my election, but I've read a lot, so I.
Written into my plan.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I would discharge the use of my office with fidelity.
Uh, discharge the use of my office with fidelity.
And so, thank you. That is always a, I mean, a lot of analogies before that was off, it's always an honor. Be able to do, I mean, this, our police officers, uh, maintain to our security is one to be respected, and I respect it too. So, thank you. Welcome to our new officer to all our current officers. I appreciate what each and everyone can do. We'll go on to our consent agenda. Aye, we've got several items there. Is there any concerns that we need to pull out and discuss independently or can we move forward?
While you wrote 4th of July and fireworks, you might be a little bit younger on one page, you actually like fireworks.
That's what I did.
So everyone knows.
Yeah, uh, fireworks are legal this year, July, July 4th and 5th, 5:00 PM until midnight. 4th and 5th, 5:00 midnight. Any questions on our consent agenda before we act on it? Most of them are, uh, street, uh, soldiers, block, uh, neighborhood parties, and whatnot.
Looks like this is a lot of fun.
It does. Is there a motion on our consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
You may. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, you're second as well?
Yeah.
We have a second. Any discussion? We all have fun and are safe. There's no.
Well, this, uh, hunters, it wasn't just the fourth, I think there's the Brew Fest coming up too, to remind everybody of the Brew Fest, taking those festivities.
Ah, yes. I'll hear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, if any opposed? Takes care of our consent agenda. We will now go to unfinished business and we'll start there with ordinance 2504. Here, please.
Mayor, ordinance 2504, work with the city of Evanston, many said 24 or 7 on 8. The government city of Evanston, Wyoming, related to sign permitting the providing for study of the authority of the resolution about Evanston.
Thank you, Sheriff. There's been no change in language or, uh, the ordinance since then, right? That is correct. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2504 on 3rd reading?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
No, I'll second.
Discussion? There is none, I'll hear say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved on 3rd of February. Order 2505, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Order 2505, it's a work in authorizing final flat for Revolution Vision located in the city of Evanston, Wyoming. To be more particularly described here in this ordinance, is on second.
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, there have been no changes, uh, when we, uh, last reviewed this, first reading. I will quickly just go through and give a quick summary of what's being proposed. So this is the area that's proposed for a five-lot subdivision. It is, uh, the adjusted lot to lot in the Kinnler Division. It's located just between Constitution Avenue and the municipal vault course and north of Declaration Drive. It is about 6.92 acres. And I will move to post flat, I believe. Nice colored version here. This is the five lots, uh, subdivision, I suppose. Lots 1 through 4 are proposed to be developed for single-family detached dwellings. Lot 5 is proposed, uh, for a multi-family dwelling. This property is located in a low-density residential developing zoning district. Uh, the lots are large in size, so they're adequate in size for the district involved. There are some existing easements that are in place that carry on to the subdivision, showing in red on the map for the power company. And there's existing, uh, easement, uh, trended for a road right away for Constitution Avenue, showing in blue just to the left on the map. The, uh, rest of these are showing in pink and green, those are proposed easements with the subdivision. Uh, Concourse Drive, talked about that, uh, just briefly. Uh, Concourse Drive is proposed as a private road, uh, 24 feet in width. Uh, no parking is proposed or to be allowed on the street to allow for emergency vehicle access through. The road will be maintained, taken care of by the owners within the subdivision. There is a, a, um, city water main and sewer main that is proposed to extend through under Concourse Drive. That will be maintained by the city. That's a big part of what's pushing this, as I commented in first reading, into a major subdivision. There's also a section of Revolution Avenue that was not completed, uh, just, uh, on the north side of Declaration Drive to the subdivision boundary. Uh, the, uh, sub, the subwriter is proposing to complete that improvement. I think I covered just about everything in a nutshell there. Subdivision Review Committee, we've, we've reviewed it. It will go to the planning commission next Monday. And they will give their recommendation for third reading. Yeah, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2505 on second reading.
Soon.
Is there a second?
One second.
You didn't say anything. So any discussion?
You get a lot of false and a lot of.
Very well, very possible. They would have, I'm explaining.
It's not saying that you're lying, like I'm not a bit of that, you're going to get some false and a lot of.
Go for the discussion, I'll hear say aye.
Aye.
If any opposed? That is approved on second reading. Thank you. Thank you. We will go on down to new business and we'll start there with Resolution 2528, Mr. Mayor.
Change to Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2528, 28, is a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Historic Preservation Commission for the city of Evanston and the city to facilitate the continued restoration of historic meaning, specific extension to the 4420, as section 2 of the.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do you want to tease out this discussion, Mr. Sheriff?
Sure. By way of background, Mr. Mayor, in the June of 2021, the city and the HBC entered into a new M U regarding the rest, restoration of 4420 engine. Uh, the HBC opposed the city in 2025 with a request to extend or renew the M U. Uh, city staff met with HBC Chair Jim Voluntiers on Monday, March 31st, 2025, regarding the new. Evidence time staff indicated to the HBC, you would draft, uh, revise M U, containing council comments. And the HBC comment, that was sent to the council on April 3rd, 2025. We receive comments, concerns, that was sent to Historic Preservation Commission on April 11th, 2025. HBC considered the draft on May 29th. Staff met with Chair Person, Commissioner Cox, during that meeting. HBC's questions and concerns were discussed. And staff discussed possible revenue issues to the prior draft. And on June 6th, 2025, those provisions were prepared and forwarded to HBC on June 9th, 2025. The Historic Preservation Commission met on June 12th to consider the draft. And at that point in time, it was, I mean, absolutely approved by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, Rocko Neil, City of Evanston Community Development Department. I'll just run over it quickly if you haven't reviewed it. I trust that you have, um, some minor changes from the previous M U to this one. We addressed in section E, access to the courtyard for material and tool delivery. Uh, section 8, uh, section H, excuse me, update to the waiver, uh, and requirements for renewal of the waiver every year. We changed some of the notice timelines, extended those notice timelines. Added language regarding organization and relocation of materials and tools prior to placement of a database, which we agreed to do. As per city responsibilities in the M U. Those are really the major changes. And then added a, an environmental, um, section in there. It's a, a relative second.
Any questions for?
I'm liking those changes in red, we, uh, it's easier to read, so. Mark did an excellent job to keep track of this for us.
Is there any objection on this resolution?
I'm going to use the motion to pass.
You use the motion, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
So, is there any? Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say that I would love to, I know there's back and forth on this M U, but I would love to see the relationship between the city and the Historic Preservation Commission get better. What they're seeing, what we can do to increase that communication, increase, increase their feeling of being a part of the team and part of the city. Um, I want to see us use that section, use that statement as we can. So the more I think we can communicate, the more I think we can move forward in the right direction. So I know those are just out there comments, but I would love to see that.
I think it's important to get it going and keep it going because I think it's a great asset to everybody. And I said there, if I have too much about the paintings, I think we just delay things. I think we just really need to keep things moving.
I have a technical question in the language. Um, the only thing that concerns me in this M U is, uh, section F, removal of the steam engine. If the city determines there is a bona fide and viable lease option for a business operator, necessities, necessities of removal of the steam engine from the roundhouse goes on. Who's the city? Who makes that determination? Does it come before all of us to decide on which business goes in section 2 or be the decision for this council? Okay. That's my only question.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that, so.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I don't know how long I'll be on this council or any of that, but I would like to hopefully say that if that steam engine was to be removed for any reason, I hope we find a very suitable place for it, but, you know, it's not just, I don't think it needs to go back to painted black and put a park again. I think they've done too much work to it to, to say it needs to be.
I'm just pushing it out on the permit and what it's.
I just, you know, I don't want to see all the work that has been done, but it's.
Just go for the discussion, I'll hear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, if any opposed? That is approved, we'll sign that and then send that to HBC, Mr. Mayor. Correct, yes, I understand. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. We'll go on to Resolution 2529.
Mr. Mayor. This is Mayor, Resolution 2529, is a resolution of the city of Evanston acknowledging Lemonade Day and exempting UBS for business license or apartments on August 9th, 2025.
I'm putting on a different hat. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Rocko Neil, representing Jump Start Evanston and Lemonade Day. Lemonade Day is a youth entrepreneurship program. It's a national program. Um, there are currently three communities in the state of Wyoming that participate. We're the third. And I think more will follow us. I believe Sheridan is doing it this year as well. Jump Start Evanston is, is the organization, putting on the event, but, uh, private funds have gone into purchasing licensing, workbooks, materials, T-shirts, advertising, et cetera, et cetera. And so before I kind of explain in detail what the program is, I want to recognize the local businesses that sponsor this event. Our presenting sponsors, State Bank, our main squeeze, these are cute names, by the way. Our main squeeze sponsors are Union Wireless, First Bank, the Chamber of, Chamber of Commerce is our sweet spots where youth entrepreneurs can build these businesses and get a lease to place their stands in front of these local businesses and sell Lemonade on August 9th. Or whenever they would like to, but August 9th is the holiday. Again, the Chamber of Commer, Commerce, Heritage Jotto, Cazin's, Ace Hardware, Gigi's Coffee, Suds Brothers, Toronto Valley Federal Credit Union, and Walmart. So without them, this program is impossible. So without them, this program is impossible. So far, we had 25 kids register for the event, and our goal is 100, to be partnered with a local marketing agency, and we'll be pushing that out through Facebook and print advertising, et cetera, et cetera. Kids who register, participate in the program, and then submit your business results are entered to win national prizes, including a trip to Houston, and national recognition for their efforts here locally. They'll be also entered to win local prizes such as Main Street Bucks, $25 and $15 Walmart gift cards, and recognize this Lemonade Day Youth Entrepreneur of the Year. So this resolution, that was a word salad to say this resolution effectively protects any Evanston resident under the age of 18 from having to have a business license on that day. Wyoming is one of few states that do not have a lemonade law, which protects youth from having food stands or intermittent businesses. The City of Cheyenne has passed an ordinance 84110 to that effect, to protect youth entrepreneurs and allow them to do the lemonade stand. So this is a temporary fix for what I think we should do through ordinance, and it goes without saying, if a kid has a lemonade stand, we don't want to harass them, expect them to have a business license, food vendor permit, et cetera, et cetera. So this resolution is just effectively to say, on August 9th, go out, have fun, and start your first day in the business.
I think it's excellent. We had a proclamation signing earlier today, there was a lot, a lot of, wasn't a lot, it was a few, you know, several kids here, I guess, and several adults and some of the sponsors and something, but it was, it was a beautiful conversation. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Your service. There's a second.
One second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we don't need the Pineville to happen. We don't need the police harassing the Girl Scout's.
Is he having any questions, what he's asking?
Yeah.
I do have a question. Is this, is this only on August 9th, or is the kids, I see around town, they have lemonade stands in the cycle, do we need a business license?
We're not going to enforce that, that's why I was saying.
We're not going to enforce it, I'm not asking that to correct the, no, I'm asking that because why do we even ask that of the children?
Exactly. So hopefully we'll be presenting an ordinance in the next few weeks that addresses that permit protection.
Yeah, it appears to me that what it is, is it's, I guess, could be construed as a business, and since it's not directly identified as an exemption from that, it falls, it falls in line with the requirements the ordinance says it's written. And so, can you correct me on that, it seems to be, we haven't targeted the people and their businesses, what we've done is have them take, taken appropriate measures to exempt this one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I was making reference to Girl Scouts, and he's referencing the true story in Pineville, your two-year-old.
Yeah, she was selling cookies on that strip in the.
So she was, she would have a Girl Scout have her cookies for sale on the driveway leading to parents' residence, but it was within the area where the street width was, and the mayor, they don't have a police force up there, so the mayor contacted the sheriff and said, you know, you need to move and function and have a business license. So I think that is what the law was, and so it was in, here we're not caught a lot of factors, all, all the, all. Well, I think, I think the resolution also points out that the counsel, Schmidt, is what was from yesterday, it gives the councils a thought, it's essentially in terms of holiday for business licenses required, that may be out of course with youth. And so our ordinance doesn't make that distinction, I think that's, plus, it starts an educational program for entrepreneurship, tells them, you know, I understood part of the programs, they'll open you a distribution plan for your costs, and how you try to cover that, that's part of this intervention will be, so I also plan to see that, you know, this is something that maybe this council will look at internally for production for you in the future, or all of it.
So it is, if you go to lemonade day.org/evanston, it's free to register, they just need to guard in and sign them up, and provide a release that they can participate in the program. It's 20, I believe it's 21 modules, it should take an elementary-age entrepreneur about four weeks to complete the program, and it teaches them, basically walks them through the process of building a business and a business plan through cartoons and fun and training. And so, to answer your question, Counselor Schmidt, 9th is the holiday, and that's where we're going to advertise our community, on this day, go out, take 20 bucks and go buy lemonade from all these, all these kids around town. But I would encourage kids, as soon as they complete that program and they have a business plan together, throw a lemonade stand up and get it a shot, so.
I think it would be fun if Evanston became the lemonade stand, the capital of the earth.
I agree.
I think this could possibly address, you know, a bigger situation where we want to promote these young entrepreneurs, you know, and maybe allow them a little more free rein instead of, you know, saying they're going to have a business license. We have another situation occur several years ago, where a young 16-year-old wanted to do taxi service, he went back his scooter, you know, drive that person's car, and then jump back on his scooter. Taxi companies are going to have to do that. You know, we, we need to find something to, to more embrace young entrepreneurship instead of trying to kill it. So if you want to start a business, we need to address this a little further than just one day.
You have a, you have a young person who is motivated enough to get up and do things, we need to support that. Just go for the discussion, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye, agreed both. That is approved.
Thank you.
Resolution 25 is first, Mr. Mayor, do you have?
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2530, the best decision of the government of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the proofing change order number one for the 2025 street overlay project.
Thank you.
Do you want your taxi?
Ultimately, this is a request to ask, but I would say equivalent nature of work to the overlay job. There's three additions, two are associated with the parks and that were the projects that were requested in the last budgetary session, the Bear Ponds Access Road, and then the main cemetery access road, I believe, that's the end on. And then, since there was extra money with the bid from Staker, the animal shelter department on the entirety of the payment, so those three items are being asked.
I think that's excellent. I haven't been to the animal show, but everyone agrees the other, other two, the other two are pretty.
So I appreciate David's help in being able to coordinate this, it means the same project, save a lot of money in localization fees, and yeah, thank you.
And ultimately, these will be separated in the building to our parks and that case for respect unfortunately for this week's.
Yeah, that's a great way to partner and save some money too.
That is the goal. And most, especially the bear ponds, you know, we can patch, go back to the timeline turning, but it really needs some extensive work, the type of work that has been done at the overlay pond, there is still a way to, to this, so it makes sense.
Yeah, maybe we improve that screen, great, great, great. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
There's no introduction.
Is there a motion now?
Motion, yes.
Introduction and motion, is there a second?
All second.
And then a second. Discussion? No discussion, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye, agreed both.
Is the fact that the motor don't start arriving right after the Fourth of July, would you, not only this work, but just normal work when you're called out?
Resolution 2531, Mr. Mayor, do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2531, under Resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of the premise of acceptance on the Transportation Commission of Wyoming, project number P23, 3,004, parcel number one, parcel number two, transferring certain highway right-of-way to the City of Evanston.
This request comes out of the recent city view job that was basically administered by Whiteout. The right-of-way department had to negotiate some land acquisitions for the sidewalks that are shown in the map. They unintentionally wrote the Transportation Commission as the purchaser instead of the City of Evanston, and they stumbled across that, just, I just found out about it the last month. So in an effort to really get it to the City of Evanston, which is where it needs to be, they want to sign this agreement, basically quick landing over the 130 square feet of land, just so it's in the ownership.
We're just keeping up the records.
It's unfortunate, but yes, that's what.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
All second, I'll second you.
I'll show my problem.
Any discussion?
Those are some weird little sections.
The curved one is, was actually, if you look at the actual subdivision that created that, it appears like, at the time, it was going to be like a dent in Goldensack, and so it's rounded. So it truly has that shape of the curve, they obviously straightened it out, made the sidewalk to fit, the other side, there's, I'd say, a padded inlet, that's not, not a whole long perline, so it's like a double inlet, and so it pushed the whole perline back, and that's, that's what pushed the sidewalk back as well, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here to explain it, because when I first looked at this, I'm like, what?
Yeah. Yeah, if you, when you drive, drive up there, you'll see that double inlet on that eastwardly side, and that's what kept that 42 square feet into play.
Further discussion? There's none, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye, agreed both. Resolution 2532, do you have?
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2530, is the resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of advance of the underground right-of-way, these are Rocky Mountain Power and the installation and maintenance of underground water power commission, distribution, communication.
Hey, Mayor, Council, Kimmerman, Parks and Rec. So this easement is for Rocky Mountain Power, been counseled by several engineers, that we need to move the electrical transformer that sits behind the rec center to the corner. This is way more involved than I know, that's why I have engineers helping me do this, but this easement will help get that portion of the project done, which is included in the irrigation, or the drainage projects and the retainable projects. If you ask me any technical questions, I may have to give you a card or back up here.
David, I don't know if I could read this real quick, it came up with something really good. I don't think I would be quite make myself with any questions. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion, aye.
Ready for the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yes, aye.
Moving this makes a lot more sense, because if we were to just fix where it was at, it might get buried again eventually.
Yeah, it's always buried, it's.
Yes, so moving this makes a lot more sense.
Just go for the discussion, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Agreed both.
Thank you.
All good, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything more, first time? Do you want to, you see? It's not. Do you have anything more, first time?
Oh, actually I do. I thought of lemonade needs to turn into hot chocolate stands in a way. But I do have one other thing, the Parks and Rec puts on one of our biggest events on the Fourth of July, Friday, please come see us, it's always a great time, you start out with a 5K at eight in the morning, I saw Cilly out on trail training this morning early.
She'll drive, well, not on the 5K, we, I think we'll walk like a mile.
Okay, or you pull up a mile.
She'll drive.
And then I made pancake breakfast at the Bear Building, that supports our local, our high school track team, a kids parade, which is free, they decorate their bikes and do a parade, and it's so cute and fun, and then from 11:00 to 4:00, we have live music, we have food vendors, we have climbing walls, bounce houses, so come see us at Bear Meadows, and hopefully the council will be cutting up some watermelon at 1:30.
1:30, excellent.
On our calendar. Thank you.
Yeah, just one thing to note, the water transmission line project started this week, so if you have to travel up in that area, a lot of activity on Sioux, just be cognizant of the signs and the workers out there. The ultimate goal is to try and keep that Sioux drive more local, local base, so people can get around going up Cheyenne and then City View, but that's the work that's going on there is the water transmission line.
Okay, thank you. Chief Man, do you have anything?
No, sir, thank you. Just with fireworks, we may say, and every year we've renounced some garbage cans because they put the hot stuff in the garbage cans, so let's avoid that, and if you play in the street, help clean us up, or help us out in the cleanup.
Excellent. That's always, that's always been concerned, is feeling up after yourself, that's seriously the hardest part, so thank you, appreciate it. Do you feel you have?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Is Harris?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris. Public participation, does anyone ever like to address the council previously? Yes, I will. Go ahead. I'll, I'll get back to you, Donnie, now, I'll be, go ahead.
Kathy Cook, 912 May. Kathy Cook, 912 May. Is that too long?
Don't, okay.
I have a few things to mention, first of all, I'd like to thank the hardworking city employees pulling the weeds around some of the trees and the, and watering the flower, those beautiful flowers we have, and some of the trees, and then, so, thank you, whoever you are. Okay, so I've had, I've given you guys two weeks now, since we didn't see you last week, so you all had a chance to walk down Main Street and see what I was talking about last time. And what did you think?
Which one were you talking about, the weeds?
The weeds, garbage, dirty sidewalks.
You know, it's a, it's a tough thing, when I walked down there, it wasn't too different than what it was, it could be better, I've seen worse, I've seen better, and putting out a private notice, a public notice to the people, I've talked to some people that have spaces on Main and Front over the last two weeks, and made them more aware, and they're actually hired people to do stuff than you.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I walked. I.
We can't hear you.
I, I turned on the mic. So one of my favorite things that I did do, my grandpa, my daughter lives in there, so I thought of my granddaughter, I walked up and down, and I think over the last little while, looking, and I would credit the individual businesses, because I think some of them have really started to, but also I think their people as a whole in town, finally getting into the recession, the summer, their yard is starting to look better, and so I think it was kind of getting me in that a little bit, so I'm hoping to just continue.
Okay, when I was walking the streets and see what they look like?
Sorry, I am tired too.
Okay.
I think as we come out of winter, it takes a while for everybody to kind of start learning about themselves. But, I mean, I've seen an improvement from the beginning of spring, but there's always room for improvement.
I think it's looking better. However, a lot of our big old trees are neglected, and most of them are half-dead. The big one, you know those big fat trump trees? There's a big one on the corner by Pete's sake, and it's half-dead. We have a small one by Suds, it's almost all the way dead. We have, by City Throat, the tree is all the way dead on Ten Street, it's just bare. Have you seen that?
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, I, I don't know if anyone waters those big trees. I don't think a lot of the store owners do, thinking that they will just, it'll rain on you. So this week, I, I was walking with my dogs, and I talked to a shop owner, and I said, hey, your, your tree is half-dead, and he said, well, it's half-alive. And I said, well, you need to give it a drink of water, and he just laughed. And I don't think that tree's ever been watered. Okay. So, let's see. Okay. Also, I believe that every spring, we should power wash our streets, our sidewalks, and even our alleys are pretty gross. If you haven't noticed, I think if I were a rat, that would be a good place to live, and it stinks. So I think that might be a good project in the future, and maybe even pave over the, especially the one from Ninth to Harris, it's really a mess, the alley back there. Maybe it should be resurfaced, so. Also, the garbage can lids, they're gross. They have, there's ice cream running out of the garbage cans, people started it, and then, anyway, it's a big mess. So I think they should be power washed too. And then I also wanted to ask, what happened to our music downtown?
It was on last time I walked down the street?
Nope, that was my music.
They were working on it, they were working on it, I'm great.
We did, we did budget for, in this fiscal year twenty-six, to get that fixed.
Okay, thank you. In the meantime, I open my windows and play music really loud. The last thing I'd like to talk about is since the four-four-twenty engine belongs to the city, preparations need to be addressed, and make, and make Rink be responsible for the four-four-twenty, and have a special committee with all those wonderful men working on that engine. So when it's complete, then Rink can start that train and give train rides, and we let the revenue begin, because that's a big, that would be a big revenue for our city, so, I think. And I appreciate you doing the MOU, so, and I appreciate the men working on that engine, thank you.
You, Donnie, come on up. I guess I should say, have a cheer.
I have to take these glasses off to see my papers, but I have to have them on to see you.
I'll take them off.
You're all blurred. I wanted to say a few years, a few words concerning this MOU. This has been, I'm going to say, a nightmare for the Historical Preservation Commission, because we took this very seriously, and we've been working on this since March. It isn't anything that we didn't want to just pass over and, and make it accommodate just a few. We wanted to make it so that it accommodated the city and the gentlemen that are working on the train and HPC. We tried to make it so that we could see some good things happening, but it was very hard. It's hard to, to appease everyone, we just, we just couldn't make it happen. We worked on it, we've talked about it, we patched it over, we tore it up, we started over, and we, I just want to thank you for your patience and understanding with us, because we tried to take in the MOUs that were presented to HPC by others, and pick it apart, and try and put in a little something that maybe would pass. And we understand, we didn't get everything we wanted, and we knew we wouldn't. But in this MOU that you passed, and the resolution you passed, we felt like that we had enough in there that we could work, we could work for the three years, and maybe there would be changes coming, we don't know. And then we would do this all over again, and we could appease everyone. It's hard to, to do this, but with what we agreed on, and it was a unanimous vote, and I was approached and asked for, to ask for an extension, and I thought about it, and thought about it, I passed sleepless nights over it, and I thought, this is a decision I cannot make alone, I need the commission. So I got them together by phone, and it was a unanimous decision that we all agreed upon the MOU that was presented, and that's where we would leave it. So I'm not apologizing to the guys, I'm just wanting everyone to know how things happened, and what happened with it, and why. We took this seriously, we know that the gentlemen that are working on that train are passionate. We're grateful for what they're doing, we understand the city's view, and we, as HPC, love that train just as much as anybody. But we want to, I agree with Rocco, I want to see the day when we can work together as a whole, the city, and the train, gentlemen on the, working on the train, and HPC, get along, and maybe get more done, if that happens. I want to thank you for passing that resolution, and for taking, hopefully taking us under your wing, and guiding us, and helping us with the whole training, and we're just ordinary people out there, trying to do the best we can. HPC is a commission, I don't know when it was organized, I can't remember, but it's, everyone on there is passionate about history. And so we did not want to be just stuck on the engine, we want to step out and do other things, and get more done, and so this is, this is one of the things we've, we consider as done. So thank you, thank you, everyone.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council previously?
Mayor Vermae, in Patrick meetings, basically the workshop, another meeting, so we had, I promised council to catch us up with the information that was due council by the components of the MOU, and that was to update periodically our progress. So I printed out the documents, talked about past, present, future, all these phases, and so. Appreciate the, the capacity to do the MOU as well. We keep working. Good boy, are we ready to work. I have properties for Mr. Parkson, as well.
If you all pick, I'll put the new office down there.
All right, that's it.
Anyone else who might, who might like that?
My name is Virginia Bluewell Wilson, I go by Ginger, this used to be flaming red, I don't die. I'm an avid bike rider, and I've put about five hundred seventy-five miles on my bike since the middle of, let's say, April. And I ride mostly around up by Aspen Elementary, on Broken Circle and Washakee and Aspen Ridge. And today is about the third time I've almost been taken out by a car. There, I'm, my max speed, even going down Aspen Ridge, is about sixteen miles an hour, so I'm not speeding. But when I get into those neighborhoods, it's really frightening to get pushed off the road. I know they're going over twenty miles an hour, because they're coming around the corner into my lane of movement. And I know to stay away from the elementary school when school's getting out, because those mothers will pull a U-turn away from the curb. So I've almost been hit three times by wild mothers. So this neighborhood, especially Upper Broken Circle, they're cutting through from Aspen Ridge, maybe to make their way, I don't know where, but then they go South Ridge a lot of the time. But it's pretty nerve-wracking to be nearly dead at least six times since April. So I don't know how often the police are there, I see them, and they're going slower than me, but those mothers are not. And when they come around a turn and will take me out, I have my emergency thing on, and the neighbors know me, and the neighbors come out and go, are you okay? Because I stopped, I'm shaking, and we asked for a speed limit sign, maybe on Upper Broken Circle by the elementary school, so we don't hurt one neighbor. But if they're passing me like I'm standing still at my speed through there, because it's not a downhill, it's about twelve miles an hour, I think they're going about thirty miles an hour if they're blowing past me like that. So it's kind of scary, and the kids are out there too on their bikes. But I'm, I'm big, I'm not a little kid, and I've got the helmet, and I've got the bright clothing, and my emergency bracelet so we can get to the ER, but it's pretty frightening. They're speeding through from Aspen Ridge, Washakee, and then it's down to the low, and I forget the name of that intersection of road, but it's pretty scary. Send some police. But I stay away from the school when school's getting out, because those mothers, they're pulling away from the curb without even looking in their rearview mirror on the driver's side and U-turning. So six near-death experiences since April.
Well, you're better, okay, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
I know those record the flashing lights. Are we done putting those out, or are we kind of?
They're expensive and quite ineffective.
You think they're a challenge?
They're a challenge, right.
At what point are you high marking?
When, when I see two kids side by side at the bottom of Aspen, see, going, by the time they're passing my house, probably fifty, seventy-plus, I get it. And that, that hasn't happened for a while, but a year ago, I would have them be in the driveway, and I followed them to the house, and I just, I let them know, I said, you really look funny explaining to some parent like their kid whose ball ran out on the road is no longer with us. And so, yeah, there's, there's, there's times, I watch them, because I live right there, you know, and there's a, and it seems to go in the streets, and later that haven't seemed as much, but I don't have a problem saying, here we go.
We can put more out, but generally, the average speed of it on those, they record those, and we're within the five miles an hour most of the time on those, so we can put them up, they get mic'd up by them, but we also get, they get ignored all the time as well.
I know it's a reminder for me, but that's what my next question is, if they recorded any kind of data, speed?
They just record vehicle counts and speeds, they're not taking pictures of anybody or sending tickets or not that.
Give us data back on either speed in that road, so.
The majority of people are within the five percent for the five miles an hour of the engineer design of the road.
What about a speed bump?
Those are terrible on snowplows.
What about the fourth ones, they have those for a mint in the summer?
When you put a speed bump up, what you get is you get a lot of braking, but then a lot of acceleration after. If you live right there with the speed bump, is you'll hear braking all night. The shocks is a good little bump, and the acceleration goes away. What we find is that people generally speed between the speed bumps. Reality is, I got twelve patrol, we got twelve square miles, one officer per square mile. We got generally two officers on at a time, and there's approximately a hundred miles of road in this town. We do issue a lot of citations, we are aggressive, we can't be everywhere at once, but we can focus on problem areas. If Broken Circle's a problem right now, we can give extra attention to it, get people slowed down, but it really becomes a maintenance issue. We generally got to go to areas that have problems, if you have a problem, we'd be happy to put extra officers there, but realize, as people slow down, we issue more citations, and we move on to some other area that problem will eventually return, the biggest thing is we need communication. If you got a problem area, call our agency, we're happy to take those calls and put extra officers on there when it happens.
So to help, for, for us to help you, Chief Ransh, what you're saying is we should do a public announcement for people to not hesitate to call you with issues regarding that area?
They do the calls all the time right now, and yes, it would be, you know, let us know if you have a problem area, and we can put some extra eyes on it, as, as manpower permits.
Is there anything else? I mean, what we're talking about is, this is an issue that so many have experienced. I have experienced it personally, but I see people, and I'm like, okay, so noise, braking, acceleration, speeding, snowplows, and then I compare all of those in traffic to a dead kid, and I don't give a crap about snowplows, noise, and the, you know, a hundred miles when it comes down to that. Nobody wants to face that situation, so I think, pulling back and looking at it, maybe there's something that we can do to help you, that's what I'm asking.
Just, you know, I mean, just if you, if you see someone doing that, you got kids speeding seventy miles per hour up your street, give us a call, especially if you know who they are, sign a complaint. You know, we can issue a citation, send them to court, the, if we establish reckless driving or careless driving, I mean, be a, be a good witness, but, you know, let us know if there's a problem going on in your neighborhood. It's, speeding's a problem everywhere, and we do enforce it, and it's just generally educating the public and the drivers to slow down.
Seems to me the key to it all is communication, and if you see something, say something, and make sure that people are aware of it. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Sandy Cropper from Allen, just a few comments, statements. Yeah, having more patrol in high-risk areas would be great, provided with the manpower. My question would be to the officers, do, can the public take a picture of the license plate and submit that without any repercussions from a personal private driver?
For our purpose, if you're in a, what are you, what are you asking?
If you're in a public place, you can take pictures, there's nothing, you know, especially the license plate and turning it in, I mean, we just need the number. It's, when you cite a plane at speed, it's very hard to, I mean, you think about what we issue as speed citation. Where our officers are observing the vehicle moving, estimating the vehicle, performing with radar. And a lot of people, you know, when you talk about larger vehicles appear to be going faster than what they are, vehicles around corners appear to be going faster than what they are. appear to be going faster than what they are, noisy vehicles appear to be going faster than what they are, depending on how your senses are. So we got to have some kind of method to confirm their actual speed that's actually presentable in court. Obviously, if a vehicle's doing seventy miles per hour, and you can articulate that, we're starting to get into reckless driving, and that's ruled there.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Harris, there's a gentleman that, he needs a paper.
Miss Cropper? Miss, Miss Cropper?
There was just a paper that, Mr.
Yes, Miss Cropper. Hello, hey.
Yes.
Address me, this is a meeting of the city. Okay, what can I do for you? What can we do?
Mayor Rahim's, oh, just an observation, that there is a paper that she needed from this gentleman here, that isn't good, that's all.
Okay, we won't get it.
All right. All right, I think that's it for tonight, thank you.
Anyone else?
Street Chats, everyone? Pink Pilot, twelve thirty-seven, United Street, number nine. I just want to comment on the speeding thing, because I know one of the things that really helps me, is because I sometimes, I mean, I really try to obey the speed limit sign, but I know once in a while, those little things that say, "Slow down," and I can't pay for those, but that might be a good thing to put on Aspen Grove Drive and around the school, because it really, it catches me. I mean, sometimes I'm only three miles over twenty miles an hour, but immediately, that thing goes, "Slow down," and I hit my brakes. So I like those, I think they're a nice reminder to people of what the speed limit is in residential areas.
There is, there is one on Aspen Grove, and I think I see a change, when people are coming down the delve, I'll see them slowing down.
Anyone else? If not, we go to your phone.
I will. I'm sorry. I have a question. How much would it cost to fix your sound system?
I have no idea, I think we've, we've looked at, or we're looking into it, it's, it's been there for quite a while, and all the different several planks, I think, everybody's trying to talk a little louder, I don't know, I don't know, I'll answer that question.
Actually, the acoustics, and here in Arcata, we can talk to you without the microphone, and we heard quite well. But one of the problems is when everybody's doing this, and then they can look over, and you do this, so. The reason that you don't know that much is we cannot listen to this, everybody, not everybody. I think it's been five times since I started coming to these meetings, that people have said there's a problem with the sound system when they're having a hard time hearing, and hopefully, just, all we're interested in is, it's easy fix, there are really nice microphones available today, it just needs to be a bit, it's a part of democracy, a republic, to be able to communicate with the public. That's all I have to say. By the way, my name is Greg Wilson, one of four Broken Circle Drive.
Thank you. Anyone else?